Good evening. It's Thursday, September 18, 2025, and I would like to welcome you to the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education and to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of advance notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the interest is discussed or acted upon. The primary purpose is for board members to discuss and vote on board business. In accordance with this provision of this act, the board secretary has caused notice to this meeting 48 hours prior, including date, time, and location to be posted in the South Brunswick Public Library and Board Office, filed with the township clerk, and communicated to the Home News and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the district website. Roll call Mr. Palowski.
Ms. Julie Ferrara. Ms. Alicia Khan.
Here.
Mr. Rajakrishna.
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Barry Nathanson.
Here.
Dr. Samantha Raj.
Here.
Mr. Rajesh Soni. Ms. Deepa Karthik?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ms. Laura Hernandez.
Oh, Ms. Laura Hernandez. I saw you at the bar.
Here.
There you are. I don't have a box or anything.
Here. Okay, I need approval of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion for approval? Alicia and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need approval for board minutes for July 24th, executive and board minutes, executive one and two that night, and approval for August 21st, executive and board. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Barry and Alicia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now I have a motion to move to executive session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of South Brunswick hereby moves into an executive session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10-4-21, for the discussion of personnel matters. Be it further resolved that the discussion conducted in executive session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Formal action may be taken at any meeting. Motion to adjourn to executive. Mike and Dr. Raj, to executives.
I need a motion to reconvene back to public, Dr. Raj.
Second.
And...
Second.
Deep a second. Okay, so we are back. For those of you who just got here, we were executive session. So we started, we said the pledge, we welcomed each other, and now we're back again. So next up is actually our student representative, who just walked in the door. So I'm gonna give her one second to breathe. Hi, down there.
Hi.
Hi. That's it, Navya Jain, our new student representative with the report. I love when kids come to board meetings.
Take your time, breathe. Yeah, I can.
Gotta wait for her to get up on the board.
Good evening, everyone. Let's start off with some news from the high school. Students had an amazing start to the high school year. Our annual convocation was held on Friday, September 12th, where we officially welcomed the class of 2029 to the high school and celebrated the class of 2026 as they begin their senior year. I'm also very excited to share that our first few football games were a huge success. The luau game, the neon game, and the tieback game. Many students and community members attended and cheered on our Vikings. SBHS is also looking forward to an exciting year of student activities. Our club fairs will be held on lunches during September 2020. Our club fairs will be held on lunches during September 12th and 29th and 30th, and they give students a chance to explore and get involved with the large variety of clubs our school has to offer. Back to school night and freshman parent night are also just around the corner. They will take place in September 25th and will also be selling our Viking apparel here. Student council is preparing for our yearly Wear Teal Spin the Wheel event in support of prostate and ovarian cancer awareness. Students who wear teal will have the chance to participate in fun games and activities, win prizes, and join together for a meaningful cause. Moving on to athletics, the girls tennis team is off to a strong start with the 3-1 record. They have three more matches coming up within the next week. They're looking forward to continuing to showcase their skills in the upcoming matches to solidify their Central Jersey group Bore State seed. The Viking marching man also kicks off its competitive season on Saturday at the Edison High School. On September 27th, they'll host the 45th Annual Tournament of Champions right here at the Valhalla Stadium. The show begins at 3:00 PM with our marching men performing an exhibition night at 45. Please come and support our students at this special event. Thank you guys so much for listening and enjoy your evening.
Nice job, honey. That's a really nice job. Okay, I just want to give a quick president update on our superintendent's search. So we are well underway with our superintendent's search. We've gone through lots of interviews and we're getting down to just a few candidates. So we just wanted to keep you updated with that. The board, and I want to publicly thank them, has worked so hard and canceled so many personal things to be at these interviews and to be at the briefings and to look at lots of resumes and to do what they have to do. So I just publicly want to say thank you. It is so appreciated. I hope you guys appreciate how hard they're working because they are working really hard. So I just wanted to say that, and now I will turn it over to Mr. Pawlowski.
Good evening, everybody. We have a brief superintendent's report with a longer board brief on our redistricting group. So real quick, we have some homework-free days. South Brunswick remains committed to supporting the well-being of our students, not just academically but emotionally and socially as well. In keeping with this commitment, we will continue our tradition of designated homework-free periods. These are thoughtfully scheduled breaks that are designed to offer students meaningful time away from academic demands. They allow for some rest, relaxation, family time, personal pursuits, and participation in extracurricular activities. Our fall break, Thanksgiving, we have November 26th through November 28th. There's a no homework or long-range assignments are due and no tests will be administered before December 3rd. For winter break, December 23rd through January 2nd. U.S. President's Weekend, February 13th to 16th. Spring Break, March 30 to April 3rd. No homework, long-range assignments are due, and no tests will be administered before April 8th. So students, enjoy your homework-free periods for the school year. Press release, the South Brunswick High School Choir earned a Carnegie Hall invitation for March 2026. Our choir, Concert Choir, under the direction of Aldo Aranzula, has been invited to perform at the Octovo Festival Choir in the world-renowned Carnegie Hall in New York City on March 9th, 2026. The Concert Choir will join select ensembles from across the country under the baton of Dr. John Wilson, an assistant professor of music and director of choral activities at SUNY New Paltz. The invitation to Carnegie Hall is not only an incredible honor for our students, but it's also a celebration of the music education tradition here in South Brunswick. Rob Sears, our K-12 supervisor of music, said out loud, "Our students' dedication and artistry, combined with the commitment of our teachers across all grade levels, make a once-in-a-lifetime opportunities like this possible." So congratulations to the Concert Choir. I could say, as your business administrator, I always sat at the dais here and heard the name Lisa Magnello over and over and over again. And of course, it shows up at my first superintendent's report. The state of New Jersey put out the New Jersey Library Link. They're literacy modules, and they're ready for release. The first two modules, Lisa worked on Module 1 and 3 to help librarians, educators, and citizens better understand information literacy. The first module revolves around what is information literacy? You will see Lisa in the first videos linked on the menu to the right-hand side of the screen. It's nice to see information literacy finally moving forward. And the introduction, Lisa actually shouts out her connection to South Brunswick schools with pride. As always, Lisa, thank you so much for your tireless dedication to our literacy program and taking it to the next level. So, thanks for that. This next topic's a little lengthy. We have to do a little bit of, I want to do a little bit of an update on our redistricting, reorganization core team that's been leading this work. Over the past several months, our core team has completed some extensive work to prepare our district for the future. They've reviewed demographic studies, district-wide community surveys, multiple committee meetings, facility reviews, regular board meeting briefs, community letters, district-wide webpage, you name it. This core team's putting out all of their hard work and information. They're building on this foundation of work by doing a building-to-building capacity analysis to determine our facilities' efficiency standards and with regards to number of students we can house in each district and how those buildings would be allocated or appropriately determined in our neighborhoods. So we have three developments that are already in active phases of completion. And as of today, we have 100 students registered and enrolled from our new construction that's occurring in the township. In addition to the new construction, we also are mindful of the potential impact of existing housing turnover. And as shared during our last board brief with regards to this topic, should interest rate drops in homes currently without school-aged children turn over to families with students, creating further enrollment and growth across our community? You just need to be aware that we're sitting on a little bit of a powder keg of enrollment that we're trying to manage across the district. So we have some long-term solutions that we're working on. We're working on a redistricting plan that's recognized as an essential with an active planning underway. We're working with future model planning, exploring long-term approaches to configuration and how those buildings work with a focus on creating stability and meeting student needs. Well into the future, past the enrollment explosion that's expected. We're also working with transportation, planning, building, and detailing transportation routes and changes that are logistically sound, equitable, and realistic with regards to financial responsibilities in the district. As your business administrator, I can tell you, an interim superintendent at this time, the highlight is the fiscal realities that are tied to this work. The S2 funding formula is projected to be in place for this school year. It's not going away. We're expecting some, a difficult budget year, but each year we anticipate it, we're always implementing some type of new plan to kind of offset the cuts that were expected through the funding formula. So not only is it the perspective of financial responsibility, you know, something I hold near and dear to my heart, it's also part of the dual role that I exist now with being superintendent. I can tell you that we're working hard in creating a plan that will meet the needs of all the students across the district. So it's important for everybody to understand that we're very much building what I would call a plane while it's already flying. We have students that are moving in as we are planning. And while we have data and reports that are informing our work, there's no way to predict exactly who will rent or buy a new property, how many children they will have, or what kind of grade level they will be in. Long term, we ensure that our plans leave room for growth and the unexpected. Short term, we have to address enrollment as it comes to allow for the best possible educational experience for our families. Just so everybody's aware, as of now, for example, families moving into Henderson Square, the development that's zoned for Brunswick Acres and Crossroads South, those will instead attend Greenbrook for grades 2 and 5, with all other grades remaining at Brunswick Acres and South for middle school. Families moving into Heritage at South Brunswick, those are American properties on Ridge and Shoff's Crossing Road Development. Those are zoned for Monmouth Junction and North, but instead will attend Monmouth Junction and South. So we're already shifting kids around based on where we're getting these enrollment numbers and kind of crowding classrooms. Since this, that was the previous update. Since that last update, we've closed Cambridge kindergarten 1st and 2nd grade for new students. So those students will attend Monmouth Junction instead. And we also, over at Brooks Crossing, has reached, we reached capacity in grade 3 over there. So 3rd grade students living in Brooks Crossing or new to that sending area will be rerouted to another district, another school in the district, elementary school. And that one, we're kind of playing by ear because Brooks Crossing is such a vast sending area that we're hopeful that students or families that move into that area would move into what we would call a border area, where it's bordering one of our current elementary schools. So that's kind of a play-by-ear thing. So just, everybody just be aware, the district's already facing some enrollment crunches, and we're handling them as we move forward. But I can tell you that we're still, we're still hanging our hat on a redistricting plan that, that kind of cures everything. So moving forward, the core team, and I will provide a monthly update for the Board of Ed. We're going to be 100% transparent. We're going to have continuous communication. Look for a letter coming out from me in my office the next couple of days, just kind of solidifying what I want to review tonight. And on January 26th, we're hoping to come to you, maybe a little bit sooner, with a direction that we're heading in because the January 26th timeline provides us enough time to start the second part of the process, which is creating the environments in those new buildings, receiving those new students based on the redistricting plan for the opening of September. So a lot of work to be done in the redistricting project that we're working on. And that's, that's a lot of exciting work. Lastly, on my, and I know that was very exciting for everybody in the crowd. They're all like, yes, let's rock and roll. Mr. Pawlowski's under control, he's got it going, and we're going in the right direction. So lastly, our Education Foundation for South Brunswick, the 14th Annual Taste for Education fundraiser is going to be held October 16th from 6 to 9 at Pierre's off of South Brunswick. Make sure everybody marks their calendar. It's a wonderful event, supports the district, supports the students and the buildings, and couldn't ask for a better group of people, the Education Foundation. And that's my superintendent's report, first one ever.
So I'm listening to you give your report, and I'm looking up, for those of you in television land and those of you here, we have our administrative team sitting in the back of the room. And as she's going through, and these kids are going to go from Brunswick Acres to Monmouth Junction instead of North, they're going to South instead, and they're just going, because it is so much work on the administration part also. Like, when we get one or two or three new kids during the school year, it's no big deal, it's manageable. When we start getting more, like, in groups, it's a lot of work. So I don't know, this is just my night for kudos because I just gave the board kudos, but kudos to the administrative team because they are getting hit with a lot and they're getting hit with, where am I going to put them in their space and what teachers am I going to do? And do I have to build another class? And so they are dancing a dance really quick to make sure that our kids get the best education in South Brunswick. So thank you, administrative team up there. Okay, with this, this is the favorite part, my favorite part of any board meeting, is when we get to have our babies recognized for the amazing work they did. So without further ado, I am going to bring up Ms. Blair Eisman and Mr. Tim Sweeney.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Blair Eisman, and I'm with Tim Sweeney. And together, we supervise K-12 visual arts in the district. We're thrilled to recognize this year's calendar artists at tonight's board meeting. And I know you'll be blown away by their talent if you haven't gotten to see their selected pieces yet. So to just help us get ready, I'm going to ask our calendar artists that are here in the audience to come stand along the wall. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Laura Hernandez to come on up and help us hand out certificates and a copy of the calendar. All right. So it's a longstanding tradition at our annual Joanne Kerfis Student Art Gallery in the spring for our art specialists to choose pieces to be displayed in our district calendar. Our calendar artists demonstrate creativity, originality, and a strong use of artistic choices while also showcasing their diverse talents and perspectives. Our calendar is online for you all to easily access it. You can see the cover here, and we're going to celebrate some of these pieces, too. The students we're celebrating tonight are no doubt talented, but we also must recognize their art teachers, some of whom are in the back. The students' growth and success as artists is a reflection of their teachers' dedication and guidance. They inspire creativity, they nurture skills, and they encourage them to take risks. So please give them a round of applause. We also want to thank our students for sharing their talents with us and their families who support them. Mrs. Sheila Nazir, she is the administrative assistant in the curriculum instruction department. This calendar is, safe to say, a labor of love, putting it together. And we appreciate her help with the calendar and organizing this evening. Dr. Evelyn Mammon, our assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, our building admin that are here, the Board of Education, of course, for supporting the arts. We appreciate you all. So we're going to get started. I know some of our artists aren't here tonight, but we still want to publicly recognize them. Is Arya Munchi here? Come on over, Arya. So Arya last year was in grade 2, and her art teacher was Miss Jessica Zhang. And this is a vibrant and expressive collage used, using bold contrasting colors with paint. There's a playful and abstract quality. And Arya balanced geometric shapes with organic textures in the sky and landscape. My favorite part's the handprint. Good job, congratulations. Is Mohammed here tonight? Come on down, Mohammed. Mohammed Muchala is now a 5th grader, right? And last year, his teacher was Miss Maria Giancola. Mohammed's fiber arts collage blends craft and art using fiber techniques to bring an animal portrait to life. The lion's face is both fierce and friendly, and the piercing blue eyes draw you in. Congratulations. From Cambridge, Meha, Meha Yugesheh? Come on down. How are you? A middle schooler now, right? So grade 5, when Meha created this, her art teacher was Mrs. Kristen Mallon. Mrs. Mallon said 5th grade students sculpted 3D dragon eyes using model magic, exploring color theory by mixing primary colors and adding detailed textures. Inspired by mythology from many cultures, each piece reflects personal expression and creative problem solving. Congratulations. I got to meet Michelle outside. Come on down, Michelle. Michelle, Michelle Bavina, now a 5th grader. At Constable, her art teacher is Mrs. Tracy Kachelik. And Mrs. Kachelik said 4th graders studied the giant balloon dog sculptures of contemporary pop artist Jeff Koons. Artists had just one class to create these miniature replicas using model magic clay. Observing the original form and placement, Michelle's artwork was chosen because of her excellent attention to form. It's so good that it looks like the real thing. We discussed the meaning of these enigma, sorry, enigmatic works and decided that above all, they were fun to make. Congratulations. From Greenbrook, is Tarani here? All right, Mrs. Kipness will take calendar and certificate home. Tarani is now a 4th grader at Greenbrook. Mrs. Kipness is the art teacher. This fall leaf project was inspired by the dot patterns in the Aboriginal art of Australia. Students learned about warm and cool colors using tempera paint to create a contrast between their warm fall leaf and the cool color background. They created dot patterns inside and around their leaf to add rhythm and emphasis to their painting. They created dot patterns inside and around their leaf to add rhythm and emphasis to their painting. Tarani's art stands out because of the colors she chose and the repeating patterns where she used a variety of dot sizes and colors. Her craftsmanship and attention to detail is stellar. So congratulations to Tarani. I got to meet Avi outside, too, looking sharp. All right, Avi's now a second grader at Indian Fields, and his art teacher is Mr. Jason Schissel. Did you get to see him? He's here. All right, so this is a sunflower inspired by Vincent Van Gogh. Last autumn, students observed and analyzed paintings of sunflowers throughout history and made several connections about sunflowers by observing their influence in today's world. Students used a mixed media to create their, to create this art. Avi used markers, crayons, colored pencils, and bingo dot markers with water to create a mesmerizing dotted watercolor background using cool colors. Avi was chosen due to his precision and close attention to detail. Avi's usage of lines, texture, and color, especially to create the shading in the sunflower, shows how realistic and beautiful sunflowers can be. Congratulations. Miss Elise is now a third grader at Monmouth Junction, and her teacher is Mrs. Ward. Second-grade students use their observation skills to draw realistic bumblebees while thinking about proportion, line, shape, and texture. Students used watercolor paints to add color and collage the bees' wings using rice paper. Each student came up with a positive message they wanted to share with others. Congratulations. Is Lauren here? Lauren Su is now a freshman at the high school, but last year at South, her art teacher was Mrs. Ellen Costello. Eighth graders created self-portraits because the students are experiencing an important crossroads in their lives. They are moving on from middle school to begin a new exciting journey to high school. The project is meant to be a symbolic reflection to capture this time in their lives. Congratulations to Lauren. Gauri? Come on down. Gauri, now an eighth grader? Now an eighth grader? I'm sorry, I said Lauren, did I say South? I'm sorry, Lauren's from Crossroads North, I apologize. Gauri also, Crossroads North, now an eighth grader. Teacher, Miss Ellen Costello. Seventh graders painted a landscape of Yosemite to expose students to the park and all of the many artists throughout history that have made a contribution to our country by painting the spectacular views that helped to protect and preserve the national parks. Congratulations. Ritesh. Ritesh Asakaraj is now an eighth grader at Crossroads South. Mrs. Tracy Dovis is his art teacher. In this project, students created black and white drawings of endangered animals, which were then photocopied to create multiples of their drawing, some a direct copy and some with the colors inverted. Students then created a new composition by cutting up and collaging together their copies. Ritesh's artwork was selected due to his close attention to detail, excellent use of texture and contrast, and overall creativity. Congratulations. And I know Mahika moved, so she isn't here tonight, but she is now a high schooler in her new, in her new district. Last year at South, she worked under Mrs. Tracy Dovis. For this project, eighth graders were challenged to create an Impressionist-style landscape painting using only the primary colors, white and black. Mahika's painting stands out for her creative use of color and the way she captured light. So congratulations to Mahika. Those are our elementary and middle school calendar artists. So Mr. Sweeney is going to recognize our high school artists.
Okay, our first high school artist is Shravia Mannan. Shravia's teacher was Miss Lori Buddha. And in painting, too, we painted a portrait of our pets using acrylic. Shravia painted a pet she wished she had. Her attention to detail in the fur and the pup's expression made this piece a standout. Congratulations. All right, our next artist is Charvasini Rangasani. She's now a 10th grader. Her art teacher last year was Miss, Miss Bufis. Students set up their own still-life compositions using each other's sneakers. They carefully observed their subject matter as they drew. Charvasini did an amazing job capturing the values and details of these shoes while using her trademark crosshatching technique. Okay, our next artist is Alisa George, or Alyssa, right? Her art teacher was Mr. Costado last year. She's now an 11th grader. All right, throwing a lesson on color mixing and blending techniques using oil pastels in Art One. Alisa did an amazing job capturing the feel of a cold wintry day with the use of cool colors. Congratulations. Okay, our next artist, Avi Talavain. Talavain. She's now a junior at the high school. Last year, she had Mr. Chow as her art teacher. Avi is not only a scholar and an athlete, but an exceptional artist as well. As you can see in her art piece, it oozes with creativity as well as a mastery of techniques. Congratulations. Next, we have Anaya Rashid. She's a current sophomore at the high school, and she had Miss Coleman as her art teacher last year. Anaya created a charcoal drawing using her own eye as a reference. She really made the eye come to life through her use of shadows and highlights and realistic details throughout. Anaya's ability to capture details is wonderful, and her talent shines through this piece. Congratulations. All right, our final artist of the night, Savannah LaPlante. How are you? She... Savannah's an 11th grader now and had Miss McMillan as her teacher last year. For this piece, Savannah chose an excerpt from a piece of text to visualize or visually interpret the meaning as well as to evoke strong emotion within the viewer. Savannah's use of foreshortening, color theory, and typography work together to create a painting in which her figure is literally breaking through the boundary of the composition and in which energy and transformation are emphasized. Well done, Savannah.
One more round of applause for all of our calendar art artists. Calendar artists. All of the artwork is on display in the hallway outside the auditorium. So definitely go by, take pictures, and students, you could take your piece home with you tonight. So thank you again. And I turn it back to Mrs. Hernandez.
So, I am in awe. Every time we have, well, actually, anything for the kids, I'm in awe. But the art that these children come up with, just, I mean, sometimes there's not even words. I, I, and this has come from a woman who just like draws stick figures, but beside the point. They are amazing. I am so impressed. Congratulations. We all get a hard copy because we're on the board. So I get to look at it on the side of my refrigerator. So it's a wonderful thing. Congratulations, boys and girls. You work so hard. We are so, so proud of you, and keep up the good work.
Go ahead. I just, I just wanted to make a quick correction to my superintendent's report. My very first graduation as a principal, I actually addressed everybody in the room, and I thanked everyone except for the parents that showed up that night for the graduation. As, as my first superintendent's report, I forgot the very first line on my report that said, "Talk about the opening." Our, our opening of school this year was absolutely flawless. Our transportation buses ran on time. Every school I went to visit was open doors for kids 100%. And the staff, the principals, the administrators, the assistant principals, everybody. Everybody did just an amazing job. There was not one, I did not receive one phone call over, over the course of, yeah, somebody's going, shh, don't jinx it, right? I haven't received one phone call from our opening a couple of days. And I can tell you, it's because of the hard work that our administrative teams put in over the summer. And I just have to say thank you to all of them for the work that they've done. I attended a high school convocation that was bar none exciting, and it, it got me ready to, to go back to high school. It was just an amazing experience, and I appreciate all of their hard work. And I just think they need a round of applause, just as much as these awesome artists. They're, they're artful in their profession and how they do the things that they do. It's just an amazing opening of the school year. So thank you, thank you, admin team. And that concludes my...
That's awesome. It does not go unnoticed, guys. It really does not go unnoticed. We, we see the hard work you do, and it definitely shows. So, well, my favorite part of the meeting's over because the kids are done. But we do have more business. You are more than welcome to stay and be a little bit bored to death, or you are more than welcome to take your children and leave. We'll take a five-minute break. So everybody's going and looking at the art, so we're gonna go on. And right now, our next order of business would be Board Committee and Liaison Report Policy, Ms. Khan.
So there is no report as of yet?
Yes, we've had none. Mr. Palowski, none. Shared Services, none. Education, none. And we have not, we're just getting, we just got our schedule out today about our upcoming committee meetings. Everybody got that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that will start this month, back into our committee meetings. We really don't meet over the summer for committees unless it's something pressing. So, old business?
I have, I have a liaison...
Oh, liaison report, sorry, 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 sorry. I forgot we did have liaison, okay.
Can I go first?
Yes, please do.
I have a liaison report for the South Brunswick High School. On September 12th, as Mr. Palowski stated, we had our 31st Annual Convocation. It was recognizing the class of 2026 and the freshman class of 2029. It was a wonderful welcome to the new students who will be graduating in 2029 and the senior class of 2026. I must, on behalf of the board, acknowledge and provide once again hearty congratulations to Michael Gartland, who won the 2025-2026 Spirit of the Viking Convocation Award, and to Miss Shumaila Chisti, who was awarded the Teacher of the Year 2024-2025. I also want to acknowledge the presence of my other board colleagues, Mr. Barry Nathanson, Ms. Julie Ferrara, Mr. Mike Mitchell. I think that's it.
Yeah.
And, and the administrators as well. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Any more liaison reports?
Yes, one, one quick update. I was there yesterday for the back-to-school night for Indian Fields. I just want to give a shout-out again to the whole school administration. It was flawless. I saw parents were very engaged. It was scheduled to perfection, very seamless. So kudos again. Great start to the school year by Indian Fields team.
Awesome. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. I was able to go to Cambridge last night, as you can see. And the vibe was electric. You're talking about somebody that was working all day with my own set of kids, coaching. Well, I wasn't coaching yesterday, it was arena. And going into that building just boosted me, just brought me back to life. And the fifth-grade ambassadors and the wonderful job that they did, I wanna commend them on it. The administration was there, staff was on point. I was able to visit a few presentations with the fourth and fifth grades and the special area teachers. Everything was just great. So kudos to them. Congratulations on a great back-to-school night. I look forward to the next one next year. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Okay, so old business, we have none at this time. New business, we have none at this time. So that brings us to the consent agenda, but before we go on there, I wanna make a statement about that. I know I've said this before, the board receives a consent agenda like three or four days prior. We're, we're heads up, we know what's going on, we're well-informed. If we have questions, we inundate Dave with questions, or whoever. If it's curriculum, Dr. Mammon. So we ask questions, we send emails, we have phone calls. So when we get up here and Mr. Palowski does roll call, and we just say yes, 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 do not think we're just saying yes, 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 yes lightly. We have read it, we have discussed it, and we have questioned it. So I think that's important for the public to know when we get up here and vote on that kind of stuff. But it is time-consuming, and we do take our time because we know that it's really important. So with that being said... We have a consent agenda review. Anybody?
Ready?
We're ready.
All right. So our consent agenda review for September 18th, we have our board business in approval of transfers, financials, bills lists. We have a few non-public technology, or non-public grants for NERLAMON, some technology orders, some nursing services. We're approving a contract of agreement for non-public school resource officer over at NERLAMON. We're approving some allocations for ESA funding. We are approving an increase in the not-to-exceed amount for some Bayada nursing services. We have a disposal of property. We have some transportation contracts. We're approving a shared space agreement with Hightstown School District. We're approving an out-of-district placements for in-out-of-district tuition adjustments for students with special needs. We have an extension of professional services. We are also looking to, we have a resolution for travel-related expenses, reimbursements for staff. That's a long one. Few pages there. We have an approval of some student field trips. And then we're approving a resolution to join a couple of associations into one. And then you have your personnel agenda items. And that's your consent agenda in a heartbeat.
Awesome. Lots of questions were asked on those before we made it here tonight, just so you know that. Do we have any more questions before we vote on this? Okay, can...
Roll call.
I have a roll call.
I'll move it.
Well, let's do a roll call. Or, we have a first, a second?
Second, I'll second it.
Nathanson, second, Mitchell. Two different hats today. Ms. Julie Ferrara's absent. Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajar Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Nathanson?
Yes.
Dr. Smithe Raj?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
Ms. Deepakarthik?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Okay, so now, the next and last portion of our meeting is public comments on any topic. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of Policy 0167, which governs this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the board office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that the participants be recognized by the presiding officer and the preface... and the preface comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, and group affiliation if appropriate. And by completing a sign-in sheet that's at the podium, I hope it's at the podium. Please print legibly, or we will be unable to document your name for permanent record. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Palowski will indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members. No discussion between a participant or respondent shall exceed the three-minute limit with a total time limit of one hour. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond or respond via email in the most timely and efficient manner available. All questions and comments made will be noted. Please note, differences of opinions are always welcome. Disrespect is not. Mr. Palowski, do we have anybody pre-registered?
We do not have any.
We do not. Do we have anybody in the audience who makes a public statement? Welcome, walk up to the podium. You can adjust the mic if you need to.
I will need to. My writing is not good. Good evening, everybody. I just want to state like a couple of things, like just as a comment here. I was really impressed with today's artwork, but I think, just starting from the beginning...
Wait, before you start, can I have your name and your address?
Oh, yeah, of course. I am Akansha Vora. I'm a South Brunswick resident for 20-plus years now. My kids are in high school now, so I've seen my children grow from elementary, middle, to high. So, sorry about that. I was just excited about the artwork that I wanted to get to. So, kudos to the administrative team. I heard a bit of the redistricting efforts. It sounds like you're going through lots of pain. And I would love to say that kudos to the team to get us there and, you know, looking out for our district and the new enrollments coming in and how we move forward with our future and have a vision and mission over here. I really enjoyed the art, calendar art recognition today. Every piece in my mind told a story. I was outside looking at all the pictures through collage, beat watercolors, and the creativity was amazing. I think one that stood out for me, which is why I wanted to really stand up here, was Be Whatever You Want to Be. That stood out for me. It feels really meaningful in today's times. I think it's exemplary of where we stand today. I want to commend our teachers for getting this meaningful art out here and for inspiring such talent. So this is what we really stand for as a community. I'm really proud to be a part of South Brunswick residents. So thank you, everybody. Administrative staff, schoolteachers, and everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anybody else? I have two.
Hi there. My name is Abhay Sravastwa. I've been a township resident for now 20 years. Two of my kids have passed out from the school system here. It is heartening to see the school district calendar art recognition program, to see the budding artists, you know, that are coming up in this community, and to see the overall growth, not just in one particular area, but in multifaceted, different areas for the school system. And I want to, you know, take this moment to recognize the teachers, the students, and congratulate the staff who worked hard in getting the kids where they are today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Sorry, guys, I did not think it would take this long to write that. Good evening, my name is Marion Powell. I am a parent and a resident of South Brunswick right here by the high school. Similar to these folks, I just wanted to give a huge shout-out to the kids. The art that was up there today, immaculate. That is commitment, that is talent. But I want to give a special shout-out to the teachers for the encouragement to get here. As a parent with kids in multiple schools, and Mr. P, you didn't get those calls because it didn't go down like that. They were amazing, they're supportive, they're loving, and they go that extra mile. I just want to make sure, as a parent, I just put that out there. And you guys support them, continue to do so. They're doing amazing work. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there, that that's been an amazing experience.